Okay, Myles, I think we're ready. Is that correct? Okay. I'd like to call the September 11, 2017 council meeting in order. If everybody would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colosar. Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of August 28, 2017 is prepared and submitted by the clerk. Be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports, standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and will meet again in two weeks. We have several items on the agenda. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, well, Mr. Colosar is not here. Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held, nothing to report.
Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings held and nothing to report.
Request for council action. We have several items for the Finance Committee. Seventeen one fifty-six, Spring Grove Cemetery Master Plan Proposal Discussion. Seventeen one fifty-seven, Amending Amendment to Number Nine, North House Taxiway Reconstruction at the Airport. Seventeen one fifty-eight, Establish Speed Limit on Route Eighteen. Seventeen one fifty-nine, Expenditure Over Fifteen Thousand for Purchase Over Two Thousand and Eighteen F-150 Pickup Truck for the Water Department. Seventeen one sixty, Budget Amendments. Seventeen one sixty-one, Fund Transfer, JED Fund to Bicentennial Fund. Seventeen one sixty-two, Fund Transfer, General Fund to the Bicentennial Fund. Seventeen one sixty-three, Expenditure for the Two Thousand and Seventeen Holiday Lighting. Seventeen one sixty-four, Revocable Use Permit for Two Sixty South Court Street. Seventeen one sixty-five, Renewal of Backup Chief Building Official Agreement with the City of Brunswick. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Police Chief Testing Process is ongoing. The Assessment Center has been completed. The Written Test is scheduled for September fourteenth. The candidates then have a period of days to review the Written Test and the answers and see if they want to challenge any of those. And then shortly thereafter, the top three names will be certified to me. We hope to have the process completed by early October. Yesterday, Sunday, September tenth, was a Tunnel to the Towers event. The local director for LST, Mark Phillips, plans that. He's on the board in New York. And the City of Medina has been graciously selected year after year, I think because of Mark's involvement. But I wanted to mention that it was very well attended and participated in by our staff and safety forces. I had a couple of questions from the public on Facebook, not knowing what the foundation actually funded and what it is. They call them smart homes for wounded military members that are missing multiple limbs as a result of their service to our country. And what they build are these homes where the cabinet doors, the refrigerator, things like that will open up remotely for them so they can live independently as well as safely. So it's a very good cause. And one of the military members who had a house built for him and Marietta was here for this race and has been here for past races. The Fire District Advisory Committee is on council's agenda tonight for the city representatives. And it's going to be comprised of one trustee and three residents from both Medina and Montville Townships. And then the city representatives, if passed by council, will be the Chair of Health Safety, which is Councilman Mark Colosar, resident Gary Linden, business owner Mark Williams, and myself as the Safety Director. And the purpose of this committee is to review our current operations and discuss whether there's a need currently for additional staffing hours or days of the week in relation to the call stats that we have. Once that is reviewed and the group is working together well, it's our hope and desire to then begin reviewing the formation of a fire district in all three jurisdictions and hope to get that started relatively shortly. I'd like to take a moment to thank all the residents and the visitors who took the time to go and experience the newly renovated and reopened Medina City Pool. It was very well attended and used, even with one of the cooler summers that we've seen this year. And I thank the public's support for that. And then last but not least, and related to that, is Ms. Deborah Hallock has established a new nonprofit to raise funds for the future needs of both Memorial Park and the Memorial Pool. The Memorial Park surrounds the pool there. And Ms. Hallock's father was one of the original members who literally built with a couple other residents of the city by hand, dug out and built the first pool back in the 50s. So she felt it proper and right to keep the family name involved in the ongoing operations of the Memorial Park and Pool. And we're thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, your Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the general fund budgets have been submitted and they're scheduled for review. We'll start that later this week. Other than that, there's a couple of things on the agenda later that came from Finance, and I'll talk about those when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Lieutenant Burke, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September the sixth, officers from Medina City Police Department, in collaboration with Medina County Drug Task Force, the US Marshal Service, the DEA, Medina County Sheriff's Office, and BCI, conducted a roundup of crack cocaine dealers in the City of Medina and the greater kind of three-county area. There were twenty-nine indictments handed down. Seventeen of those were federal indictments. Twelve of them are state indictments. As of this date, twenty-eight of the twenty-nine people are in custody. Additionally, I just found out this afternoon, two employees of the police department have been called up to active duty to go assist in the recovery and rescue operations in Florida and Texas. So I ask that everybody just got to keep them in, you know, your thoughts and prayers. That is all.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mandal, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Fire Department will be hosting our annual Open House and Safety Day. It's scheduled for Saturday, October fourteenth, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number One at 300 West Reagan Parkway. It's a free event. It's rain or shine. There'll be a lot of emergency vehicles, hot dogs and popcorn, and got a couple of helicopters coming in for the kids to see. So please try to put it on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update. We do have a Rec Advisory Committee Thursday, September 21st at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two announcements for the public. First, the splash pads at Fred Greenwood Park and Ray Mellert Park are closed for the season as of Labor Day. Another successful year, so we're excited about that. Secondly, we just performed a reroute of our mountain bike trail at Huffman Cunningham Park. So we just ask that the trail users obey the signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, our concrete street repair project is underway. This is the program where we replace concrete slabs in the pavement all throughout town. We appreciate everyone's cooperation with some of the traffic control in those areas. Please be patient. Also, I want to announce, ODOT is going to be starting two bridge projects in the city. One on West Smith between South Huntington and South Prospect, and one on North Harmony between East North and East Union. Both of these locations, the road will have to be closed at the bridge for a period of ninety days. They look to start next week on that, so apologize for the inconvenience, but this is a good thing. The state is paying for these two replacements in total. These are city bridges, so this will benefit us. But I ask for your patience during the time it's closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bakoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's an ordinance tonight with regard to the city auction, so if it passes upon approval, the annual city auction will be on Saturday, October 21st at the City Garage. That address is 781 West Smith Road. Preview will be at nine o'clock, and the auction will start promptly at ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of council appointments. This is the Fire District Advisory Committee that the mayor alluded to in his report for the City of Medina Representatives. We have the mayor, Dennis Hanwell, of course, the Chair of the Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colosar. The resident representative will be Gary Linden, and the business representative would be Mark Williams.
Move to confirm council appointments for the Fire District Advisory Committee.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the appointments?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Notices, Communications, and Petitions, there are none. Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the Chair on a reasonable timeline. Approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Mr. Sheets?
Good evening. My name is Sam Sheets, Attorney, 225 East Liberty Street, Medina, representing Brian Russell. I simply wanted to introduce Mr. Russell. He'd just like to make a few last comments relating to the ordinance you'll be considering. It's ordinance 132-17 later in your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Russell, Cook Road, Medina Township. I'd just like to talk a minute about the storage units I've been trying to get on, get approved. I didn't realize how challenging this would be. I, other cities are addressing this problem. The storage I have now, especially with the type of housing that's going up, the smaller homes, there's a huge need for storage. I have the six buildings out by Boyards on Route Three. They've been full for several years. I have a waiting list for people to try to get in. And when I saw the site on 57, I thought this was ideal. It was across from the Fire Department, mounds on both sides and pine trees in the back. And I just thought this would be perfect. It wouldn't offend anybody. And you wonder who's in these, it's people moving, it's house overflow, grandparents, kids at college. This is what I see in the units. And, you know, in fact, I have a sign that there's no trailers or boats. I think they take these to the industrial sites. So these are household goods that I'm seeing in the facilities. And some of the concerns are the safety. I've had this facility for eleven years. I've never had one problem with any of the tenants in there. Had six defaults. Two of the people, they were older people that passed away restoring things. I know people say, well, what about the storage treasures? What do you find? Never found anything, but these four people that hadn't passed away, they left some bags of clothes and things like that. So I've never been lucky with that. The design, if you look from 57, there's no doors, same way my units are in Route Three. There's no doors. It looks like windows with shutters. So aesthetically, it's appealing when you go by. They're all aisles. It's perpendicular to the road, so anybody drives by sees right down the aisles. There's no units, doors to get into the back of the buildings because people, that'd be one way to hide back there. I've never, I just don't have those problems because everybody's visible from the road. I have 24-hour cameras. Hours are seven to seven. There's low lights on the soffits of the building, so it wouldn't distract the neighbors. As far as traffic, I know that's a concern. I've been there on many weekends. I gotta be honest, I've never seen more than three cars in at my storage facility out on Route Three at any one time. Once while, maybe a moving vehicle will move in there, but I just don't get the traffic at all. People come and go, and it's amazing how quiet it is there. The adjacent exposures, you know, obviously, no one wants to see this, but when I saw that it was zoned for twenty-seven apartments, fifty-four garages, I started getting calls from all sorts of developers wanting to see subsidized rent. That's what they do, put in apartments, buildings. And I talked to the neighbors. Lady on the right, I said the mound would remain there. She had no problem. The biggest home exposure in the back is adjacent. They said they had no problem. The fellow owned a very nice home on Stirbridge. I went and saw him. He looked at me and goes, "That'd be great. I could use it." And so I don't think it would really diminish any home values. In fact, it might even protect them from what could go in there with the zoning. So that's why I just thought this would be an ideal location. I know zoning, it's not in the zoning. I was surprised how challenging it was to say, "Hey, can we look at this again?" And they said it doesn't fit, but other communities are doing it. And I, the people, their household goods, they, I don't think they should be going out to an industrial site if they want to put some stuff out there, because that's pretty much what I've been seeing in my facility. And again, eleven years, I've never had any problems at all. So I just wish you'd consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's Kevin Lewis. I live at 4945 Mandarin Drive in Seville, Ohio. I work for Ohio Lassit. It's a trust fund for the Ohio Labor Unions and the Ohio Contractors Association. And I'd attended one of your subcommittee street meetings earlier and talked with your mayor, and he invited me to come to a regular council meeting and hand out my brochures. Basically, I'm just here doing some PR work. You know, we're not interested in anything you do in-house. We're not interested in anything, you know, we don't sell dump trucks or gravel or anything like that. We're interested in man-hours. So anytime you bid a project out to construction companies, that's where we're interested in it. And, you know, Medina County is part of the Akron Local. And when I give you a folder, it'll show all the different locals throughout the state. All the locals do their training down at Howard, Ohio, and get certified in everything from concrete, blacktop, everything you got to do anymore, you got to have a certification for. So I'm sure we got some members of the Akron Local that live in Medina County and stuff like that. So I just wanted you to be aware that we are around, and we appreciate any time you do put work out for bids. Hopefully, one of our signatory contractors will win that project, and that puts our membership to work. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad, oh, one other thing I want to make point of. We're not state-funded in any way. Everything is negotiated through our contractors. All of our members have retirement, have health insurance, and just a little PR work. If I got, if you got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. If not, I'd like to give each a brochure.
Sure. Bring them up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have my business card on there here. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 118-17, an ordinance authorizing a job creation grant agreement for Spray Products Corporation. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Spray Products Corporation for the purposes of acquiring a building at 1000 Lake Road to expand their manufacturing operations, create thirty-seven new full-time jobs, and a little over 1.5 million in payroll with an investment of 7.3 million into the facility. At this time, the company is in the due diligence phase of the building acquisition. And just as a reminder to council, this site is the former Valspar Building, which is one of our larger vacant industrial buildings, roughly 270,000 square feet, that is served by rail, which would be a benefit to this company acquiring that site, as then they would be part of our rail consortium. Additionally, this is a business attraction project, as this company is currently corporately headquartered out of Plymouth, Pennsylvania, which that facility will stay in place. And this is just an expansion to that facility in Medina. The grant agreement will provide Spray Products Corporation with a grant up to forty percent of new payroll taxes to the City of Medina for four years. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by the law director. And as a reminder to council and the public, these grants are paid for out of non-income tax-generated revenues, and we are not requesting the emergency clause. Mr. Bart Bastian, President of Spray Products, is here this evening along with his lovely wife, Jane, who they spent quite a bit of time shopping and dining in Medina this afternoon. So it was nice to see them out and about on the square. But if council has questions, he is here to address any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Is there any questions? Yeah, welcome to Medina. We're glad to have you, and hopefully you enjoy the square and the activities that we have around the square and get to know the department heads and the mayor. Any further questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll and adopt from the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordinance 118-17 passes seven zero, six zero, sorry.
Ordinance 119-17, ordinance amending sections 3102D, 3105, and 3107.7 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Fire Department. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Chief Painter?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's three portions to this ordinance. The first is the elimination of the First Assistant Chief. This is the last of three part-time assistant chief positions created over thirty years ago. As the department's grown, we've gotten full-time staff. We've been assuming all these administrative duties. This position was vacated by a retirement earlier this summer, and we requested we would abolish that position at this point. The second one is strictly cleaning up the title. The Second Assistant Chief Fire Marshal is a full-time position with us, and it would just change to Assistant Chief Fire Marshal. There'd be no change in the job description or the salary. And lastly, we requested to add two part-time lieutenant positions with the expansion of the Montville Station. And now with the contract with Medina Township, two additional stations. We're looking for some dedicated supervision that we can hold accountable and be there to make sure the personnel and trucks are supervised appropriately.
Thank you. Any further questions? Will the clerk please call the roll and adopt from the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 119-17 passes six zero.
Resolution 120-17, a resolution authorizing an application for grant assistance from the State of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission, relative to the Issue One and LTIP program funding for the South Broadway reconstruction project. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Parton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the application we make to the Ohio Public Works Commission every fall for their Issue One program. This year, we're recommending a project, a replacement of South Broadway Street. It'll be complete reconstruction of the pavement and installation, new storm sewers, water lines. Some of the sidewalk will try to save as much as we can. Our grant application will ask for a total of $478,000 in grant assistance from the state. The total project is approximately 1.3 million.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Let me just say this. Since Mark's not here, we're talking about the brick street.
That's correct.
South Broadway. And this is no decision on whether the street's brick or concrete. But my hope is that we can find the funding, you know, so that we can, when we do this street, that we can, we have the ability to do it in brick. And for a number of reasons, but I think one really important reason is it is, I think it's incumbent upon us to honor the vote of the people of Medina in 1982. It was a legitimate vote, a legitimate referendum, and that was the will of those people at the time. And so my hope is that we can reconstruct this in brick and, first of all, and secondly, that we will be able to do that without necessitating financing from people that own property there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and adopt from the resolution.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution 120-17 passes six zero.
Resolution 121-17, a resolution donating fifteen Dell computers to the City of Medina, the Medina City Schools. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Since my employer is Medina City Schools, I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay. Any discussion? Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So these are fifteen computers that the city would otherwise send to auction, and we generally get very small amounts of money for them. We've done this routinely with the schools, giving them twelve to fifteen a year that we would otherwise dispose of by auction. And they are able to get another four or five years for their purposes out of those, which is a great collaborative effort between the city and the school and using tax dollars as effectively and as efficiently as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Abstain.
Resolution 121-17 passes five yeas, one abstention.
Resolution 122-17, a resolution establishing a blanket purchase order amount limit as required by the Ohio Vice Code, Section 570541D3. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This originated with our audit. These limits already applied because they apply to all purchase orders, but the auditors would like them to be more explicitly applied to blanket purchase orders, so that's what we're doing here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and adopt from the resolution.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution 122-17 passes six zero.
Ordinance 123-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for the auction, sale, and disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Bakoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as the ordinance indicates, we have many items. We're asking for approval for this sale at an auction. We have police cruisers. There'll be tools, bicycles. The rec center submitted numerous items, too many lists, so there's large trucks, electronics. There's a little something for everything, for everyone, rather. And the auction is slated Saturday, October 21st, at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road. Additionally, it'll be on the website. We'll post that as soon as time allows. And Mr. Huber has also approved the contract with First Quality Auction, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and adopt from the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 123-17 passes six zero.
Resolution 124-17, a resolution extending the intensive supervision probation grant for the Medina Municipal Court through the fiscal year 2019. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the resolution emergency clause. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual grant for the municipal court to pay for their intensive supervision probation grant. It started in 2000, fiscal year 2015. And this grant period is from July 1st of 2017 to June 30th, 2019. The request for the emergency clause is because we're already several months into the grant, and they need to draw down these funds, so they respectfully request the emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll and adopt from the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll and adopt from the resolution?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
由二零一九年九月二十日开始， 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 由二零一九年九月二十日开始，
relative to the job creation grant agreement for Carlyle Brake &amp; Friction, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordnance 6317 authorized the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Carlyle Brake &amp; Friction Incorporated for an expansion project at their manufacturing facility located at 920 Lake Road. After the grant agreement was signed by all parties, the attorney representing the company noticed that the verbiage in the grant agreement should include Friction Products Company as they are a wholly owned subsidiary of Carlyle Brake &amp; Friction and is the actual entity creating the jobs. So, we amended the agreement to include, the grant agreement is with the city, with Carlyle Brake &amp; Friction, and Friction Products to cover all of them. The other project parameters remain the same, and the revised agreement has been reviewed and approved by the law director, and we are not requesting the emergency clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Would the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordnance 131-17 passes 6-0.
Ordnance 132-17, an ordinance amending sections 1127-04 and 1127-05 of the planning and zoning code of the city of Madana, Ohio pertaining to the conditionally permitted uses in the R4 district and lot development standards.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Madal or Mr. Huber?
This ordinance addresses the issue that Attorney Sheets and his client spoke to previously in the meeting. The applicant requests that we amend our zoning code and add as a conditionally permitted use low-rise residential storage unit. This request is taken to our planning commission. Our planning commission had a hearing. Our planning commission voted against this request by way of a 5-0 unanimous vote against the request. The process then requires that the city council take this issue up, and our ordinance requires that in order for this council to modify the recommendation of the planning commission, you can only do that by way of a three-quarter vote of the members of council, which means that six of you have to vote to modify what the planning commission did. Otherwise, we don't meet the requirements of this code section. The request is for a storage unit in a residential area, was considered by the planning commission to be rather atypical, and frankly, as a lawyer looking at zoning law, I find a storage unit request in a residential area to be rather atypical. Doesn't, not impossible, but not typically approved. The council needs to take this issue up. You have to vote on it, and in order to modify what the planning commission ruled upon, you have to have a supermajority to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, do you have anything to add as the council representative on the planning commission?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to reiterate what Mr. Huber said, that the vote was zero yays, five nays for this. The planning commission looked at this as a, somewhat of a spot zoning area, because there were just some specific areas in the city that this would apply, not large areas, but specific lots. And in reviewing the strategic plan, or the planning, the strategic plan of the time, I believe it was 1997, this storage unit was not something that was envisioned as part of the residential area, and in my opinion, looking at these, while they are nice, I don't think this is something that we, as a city, want to see in one of our main entrances to the city, as you come in and look at this. It's not aesthetically pleasing, and I don't think that it would be something that the residents in, how shall I say, in time would agree with that.
Thank you. Is anybody else that wishes to comment? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. My sense of this is different, and I respectfully disagree with the planning commission, and these are the reasons. I looked at the reasons that were given by the planning commission, and I looked at the reasons why it was denied by the planning commission. I think they had three basic reasons. And then I looked at the reasons that Mr. Sheets provided us with, and I think he had, I think we all got this, and maybe, I don't know if this has been entered into the minutes or not, or if I should read through them, but he had 40, I think he had 40 reasons that, you know, he said, well, this, these were reasons why this would make sense. And I'm an advocate for neighborhoods being neighborhoods. Most people kind of know that, or should know that. However, if you look at that piece of property, and you look at other pieces of property in the city that are currently available where this, these kind of facilities could be built with the zoning change, it is, it's extremely limited, for one thing. Secondly, when you look at that piece of property, and you look at the adjoining residential properties, it makes a lot of sense. If, in fact, you build 24, 25, or 26 units there, the infrastructure impact on the city would be pretty serious. If you build storage units that are compatible in design and are residential-looking, the infrastructure impact on the city is negligible. Earlier tonight, we were talking about speed limits and traffic on streets. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cars are going to go in and out of residential units, multifamily residential units that would be built there, whereas if you have storage units, two or three or four or five cars a day, I don't know, 10 cars a day would go through, not to say anything for the other impact, the impact on everything else that is part of our infrastructure, which is the water and the sewer and the schools and all those other things that come into play here. I cannot see a reason to deny these, particularly based on that argument, that it is an entrance to the city, and it would be visually, visually, it would be objective. I've entered this city from '42, and I've entered from '18, and I've entered from South Court. I've entered from West Liberty. I've entered from West Smith. And there's commercial buildings built there, and if you look at other places that commercial has worked into residential areas, in many of the more close-in neighborhoods, in historic neighborhoods, the zoning permits them, you know, houses to be used as businesses. So, this makes sense to me. The impact, the infrastructure impact, the visual impact, I think, is negligible, because I think it would, it would look fine, and the fact that the folks that live there, that in proximity to these, where these would be built, do not object. If it was me, and I lived there, and I had this choice, build 24, 25 more units, or build these storage units, which would I think would be quieter? Which would I think would have less impact on my neighborhood? Which would create less traffic? The only other thing I could think of was if I were to move and live next door to a cemetery, and particularly because this is not an industrial, it's not industrial storage, it's not storage for large vehicles or boats, and it is only operated and open seven to seven. All of those things, to me, conspire to make this a perfect fit in a residential neighborhood. And in many residential neighborhoods, we do have commercial businesses, and they work quite well. And this one is a low-impact, low-traffic-volume, no, almost no impact on the infrastructure, and it would, it would seem to me that this could be zoned site-specific. I mean, if somebody said, we're afraid that there's going to be one put over here or over here, even though there can't be that many more places where they could go, it could have been zoned, the change could have been made for this site, this site alone. So, I, as I said, I just respectfully disagree. I don't usually have any disagreements whatsoever with our commissions, with the exception of the one I had recently with the Historic Preservation Board. But I think that Mr. Sheets has presented a solid argument. I've looked at what they look like. I've driven down and looked. I think that piece of property's been vacant for quite a while. I knew it was a church. It was, I think, a daycare, a daycare center. We all know where it is, because we have a fire department across the street, across the street from it, and so, in this case, I would, I would, like I said, I support this, this project.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Simpson.
First, I'd like to start off by saying to Paul and the entire zoning and planning commission that I do respect your due diligence, and the way the ordinance and the zoning, not the ordinance, but the zoning is written, I totally understand how you come up with the unanimous vote that you did. But I also would have to agree with Mr. Lamb as far as the impact on a residential neighborhood. I just, for the two reasons that I'm, would support this, is that you said you've already talked to the residents on both sides. There is a barrier of mounds.
All the residents, as you look at the property, the mounds on the left-hand side, there's a lot of pine trees. You really don't see those units. I talked to two people on the end that have exposure.
Have exposure. Well, and, and maybe if this would go through, that you could, you could put a barrier up on, and across the street is the fire department, correct?
And there are wrought iron vents, and the customers have to have a pass to get in. It's not like the public can pull in.
Right.
Pull it off the road, and they have to pull in to keep.
Oh, thank you. But, but I would have to, I mean, like I said, I, I agree, I under, I shouldn't say agree, I understand how the planning and zoning would come up with the decision that they, they did, with the constraints that they're actually put under for this being a residential neighborhood. But, and I don't understand, would the complete zoning have to be changed for the entire, that entire area if this would go through?
Mr. Madal?
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposal by the applicant was to amend the R4 zoning district to allow this as a conditionally permitted use with some development standards specific to this land use. So, that would apply to, and then for R4 zone properties that are adjacent to a state or federal highway. That limits it to R4 zoned areas of the city that are only, that meet those criteria for being on a major, major highway. So, it does limit it, but it does, would amend it and permit this potentially in any other area that's meet those area, those locational criteria in the R4 zoning district. So, it would be basically applied across the city.
The other reason is, for simplification, the 24, 24 residential units that would be put in there, I do agree with you, Bill, that it would have a much larger impact on the infrastructure than, not that that's a totally negative thing, but I, I do agree with you on that, too. And like I said, Mr. Rose, I, you know, you know how, how I feel about you and your, your status on the planning and zoning commission. I don't want this, you to think this is negative towards you, but, and I, it may not, gentlemen, may not make a difference because of the majority that is necessary, but I would also support the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Would the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Okay. Hilberg.
No.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
No.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
And Coyne.
No.
Okay, so motion fails, three yays, three nays, right?
Well, no, there was one.
Yeah.
You're right. I can count. Thank you. Ordnance 133-17, ordinance amending ordinances number 167-16 passed December 12th, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are amendments relating to transfers for the bicentennial.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordnance 133-17 passes 6-0.
Ordnance 134-17, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund, it's going to be changed to advances besides transfers.
We have to do an amendment.
We'll do an amendment.
Well, I will first move that the ordinance be amended to say.
Wait, oh, you had a move to approve.
Oh, move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shields.
I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance from using the word "fund transfer" to "fund advance."
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment to the ordinance? Mr. Durham, do you just want to explain the next two, where this taken?
This and the next are, they were going to be transfers, we're amending them to advances. The purpose of that amendment is so that if there's money left over at the end, they could be repaid, and they're to fund the bicentennial celebration.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the role in the amendment to the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would clerk please call the role in the ordinance as amended?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.